Something stupid, not on Denmark's watch. How a debt ceiling keeps the Danish government running smoothly and efficiently. Next time on The World.
Join us for a spin around the world, Monday through Thursday afternoons at 3:00 on Radio IQ.
Hey, it's Stephen Skip. That extra car that you're not really using? That car could be worth hundreds of dollars in support or more as a donation to this station. Think about it.
To donate your vehicle, go to radioiq.org.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and your NPR station. From MathWorks, creators of MATLAB and simulating software for technical computing and model-based design. MathWorks, accelerating the pace of discovery in engineering and science. Learn more at mathworks.com. And Staples, with supplies and services to get business done no matter where it gets done, from ink and toner cartridges to technology like laptops and networking accessories. More at Staples stores or staples.com.
It's Here and Now. Pediatricians have long known that early experiences like responsive nurturing relationships with caregivers and sound nutrition are important for a child's brain development. Now researchers are learning more about how these early influences can impact a child's immune metabolic and cardiovascular system as they get older. The health implications can be lifelong. Joining us to talk through some of the latest science behind early childhood development is Dr. Jack Schonkoff. He's the Director of the Center on the Developing Child at Harvard University. Jack, welcome. Thanks for being here.
Thanks, Deepa. Great to be with you.
So when I mention early experiences or influences, tell me what that means in real life.
Right. So if we're talking about babies, we're talking about very young children. So the active ingredient of their experiences is their interaction with the important adults in their life who are taking care of them. So I'll actually describe the best experiences of what we call serve and return interactions. So a baby coos or smiles and an adult smiles back. We can't help it. We're wired to do that. But it's basically these, it's, most of the important experiences are in the context of those person-to-person relationships between children and the adults who are caring for them.
And that serve and return that you just described, that's a direct line to brain development. Tell us how.
Absolutely. So the brain is wired genetically to engage in interactions with adult caregivers because this is basic biology and humans are the most helpless for the longest period of time. So this is really necessary for survival. So when that, when there is that interaction and it's responsive, it builds strong circuits in all the different areas of the brain. When those interactions are not there, either because of a very severe neglect or very disruptive interactions, it signals danger to the whole body and it activates the stress response system. And so that's, that's the key of what early experiences are about. If they're interactive, the brain develops, children develop skills. If they're not interactive, the stress system gets activated.
And why does it matter to, I mean, so those are two extremes. There's just a lot in between where you've got busy parents who can't, you can't give your child every serve you can't return, or maybe, or maybe you're just busy on your phone and you're not returning. What does it matter to do that serve and return and to put that attention in in terms of brain development?
Thank you for that question. It's so important. So we're not that fragile, right? So that there are no situations where babies are responded to every moment that they're awake.
Okay, good. So we don't have to feel guilty if we can't do it every second?
Good parents feel guilty about everything all the time, but don't feel guilty about this. In fact, if we were that dependent on interaction every second of the day, we would have, we'd be like the dinosaurs, we'd be extinct. So no, you can overdo it. It's not, it's not that refined.
Okay, great. A lot of people are breathing a sigh of relief right now, Jack. So the same science on brain is now seeming to apply to other biological systems. That means a child can be at risk for some serious health conditions, as I mentioned, as they get older. Let's take cardiovascular disease. That's something I don't think we think about in little, little children, but what are researchers finding about this impact on the heart?
Well, inflammation is one of the major components of the stress response system. So when children have stress systems that are activated all the time at a very high level, they're in an inflammatory state. And we know that that's associated with increased atherosclerosis and risk for heart disease. Now, there's always a genetic predisposition to some of these conditions, but genes alone do not predict heart disease, diabetes. Everything's about relative risk. And when the stress system is overactivated, between inflammation and insulin resistance, we have two biological responses that we know are very much a part of the most common chronic diseases.
And what I hear you saying is it's not like a small child, an infant or a toddler is going to have a heart problem now. It's that they're starting to accumulate what might turn into--
Exactly. Starting to accumulate in those children who may be more prone to this. But if you take all of the children who are in stressful situations, most do not develop heart disease. But more children who experience early trauma have these conditions than children who don't experience it.
And I imagine, Jack, you might have a quick word of advice for policymakers. How can they keep this in mind when, when making policy?
So even though we don't think, we think about the return on investment in terms of educational achievement and people being economically self-sufficient later and not requiring public assistance, for the same interventions and the same protective environments, we get less heart disease, we'll get less diabetes, we'll get less hypertension. We have to understand that children are raised by families. They're not raised by government. They're not raised by counties or states. But families who are raising children live in these environments, and the environment can either make it easier and support effective caregiving, or it can make it harder. And there isn't anybody out there who doesn't know what it feels like when you're stressed out and you don't have the patience.
Absolutely.
And that's okay. You don't have to be patient. The best parents do a dozen things wrong every day. Okay? But the real issue is are we as a society creating a supportive environment so that all families can raise healthy children? That's the key.
Dr. Jack Schonkoff is the Director of the Center on the Developing Child at Harvard University. Jack, thank you so much.
My pleasure, Deepa. Thank you for letting me be here.
Here and Now is a production of NPR and WBUR. I'm Deepa Fernandez in Alameda, California.
And I'm Scott Tong in Washington, DC. The latest news is coming up. It's Here and Now.
Funding for Here and Now comes from the listeners of WBUR Boston and BetterHelp, committed to supporting mental health through therapy. Clients are matched with one of 25,000 therapists and can communicate via video, chat, or phone at betterhelp.com-public.
This case involves a quite large question about what artists can do and how much they can make use of earlier works, or whether that crosses a line of copyright infringement.
In other words, the Supreme Court weighed in on when is art appropriation? When is it honorary borrowing? When is it theft?
I'm Michael Borbaro. That's today on The Daily from the New York Times.
That's The Daily, weekdays at 6:30 on Radio IQ. Radio IQ gets support from Renaissance School, a college preparatory program in Charlottesville for high-ability students, teaching motivated learners in grades eight through 12. Learn more at renasanschool.org.
Radio IQ is broadcasting in digital on WVTF Roanoke, WRQ Charles City, Richmond, WURV Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville, WBTW Charlottesville, WVTR Marion, WISFMYs, WQIQ Spotsylvania, WIQR Lexington, WEHC Emory, WLUR Lexington, and in Richmond on 92.5 and Fredericksburg on 94.9. Radio IQ, a service of Virginia Tech.
And I'd like to invite all those who desire to stand for a moment of silence or a moment of personal prayer and to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon and welcome to our meeting for May 23, 2023. Regular meetings are held on the second and fourth Tuesday at 3:00 PM. Public hearings are held at 7:00 PM on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Deviations from this schedule will be announced. The meetings are broadcast live on RV TV, Channel 3, and will be rebroadcast on Thursday at 7:00 PM and on Sunday from 10:00 AM until 5:00 PM. Board of Supervisors meetings can also be viewed online through Roanoke County's website at www.roanokcountyva.gov. Our meetings are closed captioned, so it is important for everyone to speak directly into the microphones at the podium. Individuals who require assistance for, or special arrangements to participate in or attend Board of Supervisors meetings should contact the clerk to the board at 540-772-2005 at least 48 hours in advance. Please turn all cell phones off or place on silent. So Item A is opening ceremonies, and would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Here.
Mr. Mahoney?
Here.
Mr. Norworth?
Here.
Mrs. Hooker? Here. Item B, request to postpone, add to, or change the order of agenda items. Are there any requests, fellow board members?
No.
Mr. Haywood?
No changes, Madam Chair.
And Mr. Lubeck?
No changes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Item C, briefings. Legislative briefing regarding the 2023 Session of the General Assembly. Mr. Peter Lubeck, County Attorney, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. It is my pleasure to introduce once again Eldon James. I'll just share a brief introduction. You know him well, but for those who are watching and may not have met him before, I'd like to just share a few thoughts, and then I'll turn the time over to Eldon. But Eldon is our legislative liaison. He has spent over 40 years working with, in and with Virginia State and local governments. Eldon received his Bachelor of Science degree in Recreation Resource Management and his Master's in Urban and Regional Planning from Virginia Commonwealth University. He has spent 17 years working in state and local government positions with the Commission of Outdoor Recreation, the Cooperative Extension Service in King George County. The final years with, the final five years with King George County, he served as their county administrator. Eldon left King George County Government to open Eldon James and Associates, Inc. in 1994 and has served as the principal of this public policy, planning, and project and program management firm since then. His firm's clients include over a dozen localities, several other commissions and associations. We are thrilled to have him as our liaison. He is a, he is a good friend and an invaluable resource and advocate. And with that, I turn the time over to Eldon.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, Peter. Appreciate that. Madam Chair, members of the board, great to be with you again. Another General Assembly session. Well, it still isn't over. They haven't adopted the budget yet. And I guess that's really the way to start with the report. We're still waiting for the adoption of the final budget. They did adopt something called a skinny budget right at the end of session to take care of some very critical items that needed to be done, absolutely done before the end of the fiscal year. And one of those impacted K through 12, which was to fix a authorization error that had been made earlier in the year where some school divisions were given numbers that they were going to receive that were higher than the numbers that actually existed. And the Assembly covered that mistake. So that was one of the skinny budget items. So one important K through 12 item. Also, both the House budget and the Senate budgets, as approved on the floor, and essentially what go into the conference negotiations that, that are ongoing, although at a slower pace than maybe we would like, includes language changes on the capital assistance grant program for school construction. And those language changes were ones that were important to the county. We expect, since they're in both budgets, in similar, but essentially the same form, that they will be in the final. And those language changes call for recognizing multi-years' worth of fiscal stress information or data rather than just one year. And the other, allowing for joint grant, grant applications for regional construction projects. There were a couple of other minor tweaks, but those were the two that were most important to Roanoke County. Moving on to the county's second priority going into the session was dealing with mental health and public hospital needs. And the House version of the budget includes $14.8 million and some change of, to move the project forward to rethink Catawba Hospital, which is, has been a high priority here in Roanoke County and in the Valley. The Senate budget has language recognizing that there's a need to move forward. With the House having the dollars behind it, we're hopeful that in that negotiating process, we'll end up somewhere in between there and keep, keep moving things forward. The third priority item was moving the ball forward on airport expansion. And the lobby work that was done by some of our friends in the legislature, lobbying the governor ahead of the development of the budget, the governor included $1.2 million to study how to expand airline capacity and service across Virginia with a special note of $200,000 to look at how to expand the capacity of the airport that serves the Roanoke Valley. That money is still sitting in the House version. The Senate version took that money out. So that's to be negotiated, and we still continue to work with keeping the conferees aware of how important that is, and we'll see how that plays out. The fourth item was granting the county a little broader authority with the use of civil penalties to deal with some local code violations. And that legislation did not make it out of House Committee, so more discussion will need to be had. And final was expansion of broadband and, and the funding resources there. The county was not successful in its most recent application, but that's because the volume of good quality applications was so much in excess of the funding available. Both House and Senate budgets have some additional money for next year. The language on both is the same, so we feel positive about it. It deals with allocating some of the federal American Rescue Plan money and earmarking it for broadband, but we certainly think that there's more that can be done. Mr., members of the board and Madam Chair, try to be real brief. I know you've got a very jam-packed agenda. I'd be happy to answer a question or two, but I don't want to trespass anymore on your time.
Any questions? Mr. North?
Just to comment, Madam Chair, since I didn't get to talk to Eldon too long beforehand. As a result of our meeting in January with Delegate Austin, the local regional partnership and the regional, alligator regional commission was asked a question in December as to what the economic estimated 10-year economic impact would be on the airport expansion. And they didn't wait for a grant to answer that question, like many times folks in government do. It was a business question, and the answer came back at, over 10 years, expanding the airport would result in $1.6 billion of economic impact. Now, if the construction took place, it would be $2.1 billion. So I hope and I pray that that information might be needed in those budget negotiations, and Delegate Austin will have that, because $200,000 for a study wasn't a lot of money for the Roanoke Airport, which is in need of expansion and improvement. So let's keep our fingers crossed on that. And you're right, we have to wait to see what happens after June 20.
And thank you for those comments, Supervisor North. You highlighted the importance of the relationship of the board with the members of the delegation. Delegate Austin was very helpful on that issue. Delegate Rasul on the Catawba issue. Senator Edwards, Senator Suterlein, and Delegate Head all provided support for each of these items, and we can't thank all of them enough.
Exactly. Good bipartisan issue.
Mr. Radford?
Yeah. Mr. James, thanks a lot for showing up today and giving us a briefing. We got an email last week that our, our schools did not make the cut for the grant. And so that, you know, I'm happy for the school divisions that got it. I'm sure they're, they're needy. But when you compare our schools, I mean, we've got schools that were built in the '30s. It doesn't matter if it's in Henry County, Martinsville, wherever in the state, it's still an old school and it needs, and it needs help. We don't have money growing in our backyard to pick it off trees. So I guess what I'm getting at is, is there, do you see any chance of those standards being revised for upcoming years?
We are about to begin the process where the governor will be asking his agencies to start developing their budgets for the next biennium. As that development process occurs, that is a time for us to, to weigh in and make our recommendations to those in the Department of Education and in the Secretariat and on up to the governor's office that we think the program could be improved.
Tweak a little bit. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mahoney?
Just thank you, Eldon, for everything you do for us. For some of our citizens in the audience or watching at home, you might be scratching your head figuring, why are we talking about legislation when the current General Assembly hasn't even finished its work this year? I think the message is that as our society has become more complex, this process turns into a year-round process. And while we look at what successes or failures we had in our previous legislative initiatives, we're trying to build and plan for what happens next year. And Eldon has given us tremendous help and tremendous support. But again, it's, it is a year-round process, and it never ends. And it is, it is important that our citizens realize that what the General Assembly does really has a huge and significant impact on the kinds and types of services that we can provide our citizens. So thank you, and we never stop working on it.
That is so true.
Thank you. Mr. Peters?
And I just want to tell you, we appreciate everything you continue to do for us and fight for, well, whatever you can get us in Roanoke County. I do appreciate everything you do for us.
We just have to always be in the game.
Yep.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Just one final comment. I'll share this with the citizens at home, too, because the state of Virginia is in silos in some departments. Let me give you an example. In smart-scale transportation, when there are projects filed for funds out of a billion-dollar pot of money, they list all the projects after the scoring's done every two years. So you can see where your community or your specific project landed in terms of the cutoff, approved or not approved. They didn't do that with the grants for education. Shame on the Board of Education. And it was brought up, and it's going to be brought up. They need to come back out and be transparent with those 119 schools and 63 school divisions around the Commonwealth who applied for what and what their scores were on the measurements to see why they did or didn't get the funds that were out there. This is taxpayer money. It's your taxpayers' money. It's my taxpayers' money. It's all of our taxpayers' dollars in the Commonwealth, and we need to see who's getting what. And that, that process needs to be transferred over from the smart-scale basis to the Board of Education, because this was their first time around dealing with grants of this measurement, $450 million. So they need a little help. So hopefully they'll get that help, because they have a 30-day comment period, and Roanoke County plans on submitting comments to that effect by the school superintendent. And I look forward to seeing what kind of reply that gets. Thank you.
Eldon, thank you very much. We appreciate all you've done for us. Next item is Item D, new business resolution, adopting, one, the fiscal year 2023, 2024 operating and capital budget revenues and expenditures for the county of Roanoke, Virginia, and Roanoke County Public Schools; and, two, the fiscal years 2024, 2033, capital improvement program for the county of Roanoke, Virginia, and Roanoke County Public Schools; and, three, the fiscal year 2023, 2024 fee compendium. Mr. Steve Elliott, Budget Administrator, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. We have a few items remaining to finalize our FY 2023, 2024 budgets. First is the approval of the resolution for you, and next we will have the second reading of the three budget ordinances, and then the second reading of the B-Pole ordinance. This resolution is the last piece of new business regarding the upcoming budget. The resolution is for the operating and capital budgets for the county and the categories for Roanoke County Schools for FY 2023, 2024, as well as the 10-year capital improvement programs for the fiscal years 2024 through 2033, and the FY 2023, 2024 fee compendium. The adoption of these documents fulfills the legal requirements. However, this resolution does not represent the appropriation of funds. This will not occur until the second reading and approval of the budget ordinances, which is scheduled next. Staff recommends approval of the resolution, adopting the fiscal year 2023, 2024 operating budget and the fiscal year 2023, 2024 capital budget for Roanoke County, the categories for Roanoke County Public Schools for fiscal year 23, 2023, 2024, the fiscal years 2024 through 2033-- through 2033 capital improvement program for the County of Roanoke and Roanoke County Public Schools, and the FY 2023-2024 Fee Compendium for Roanoke County.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Any questions for staff?
Madam Chair, I didn't get a chance to visit with Ms. Owens, so I'm going to ask the question now. Page 14 of the packet, which refers to Schedule Number Three, Summary of County and Schools' Funding Sources, more specifically line item, Debt Fund-Schools. There's a sum of money each year through 2029, but I don't see any sum of money beyond 2029. And so my question is, why? I thought that was part of our agreements to continue. Is that just the interest amount of money? What does that have to do with our MOU on the 1.8 million? Could you comment on that?
Ms. Owens, thank you.
Sure.
You know, if we didn't have 638-page packet, I probably could have gotten around to you a little sooner.
Sure. And I apologize, Mr. North.
That's all right.
We didn't get to talk about that before.
That's okay.
So you were, so walk me through again which page number you said, page?
It's page 14 in the packet.
Okay.
But it's more specifically Schedule III, the 22 through 31 Capital Improvement, Summary of County and Schools Funding Sources. And it goes down to Roanoke County Public Schools in the bottom of that Excel sheet or chart, if you will, where it says Debt Fund-Schools.
I've got it here. I'm just trying to catch up with you. Just give me one second.
When zeros pop up after a large sum of money, it gets my attention sometimes.
In the debt fund, it's one of the lower lines.
Yeah, it's like third line from the top of the chart. That's fifth line from the bottom.
And is the actual worksheet, is it the one that's the summary of the County and Schools?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So I'm looking at the bottom of that, and it's the actual Roanoke County Public Schools' all funding sources in that section there.
Yeah, yeah.
So that third line there, the Debt Fund-Schools, so that is the planned money through FY 29 that we were actually bringing in, that was remaining in the debt fund. So that was, those were funds that were available, cash that was actually in the debt fund in the county. We actually have a little bit of that as well. So it was cash that had built up that was the result of various, so for example, when we had a planned amount that we were going to issue debt for, and it actually sold at a better interest rate than that assumed 6%, then we actually had some cash savings. And so there was a period of time that we were actually pulling money out to be able to help fund some of those projects. Couple of years ago, the Board made the decision that we would just leave all the money that was in there, and it would just go to fund the debt in the future. And so that's why after fiscal year 2029, you're not actually seeing any, any money allocated for FY 2030 through 2033, and that's simply because we're not pulling any cash out of the debt fund and back over and to be able to fund capital, the capital projects. Because now we have a different plan where we're basically, we've got borrowings that are, you know, allocated each and every year. We've identified the amount of money that we need to actually put into that fund on an annual basis from the county and the schools to be able to fund that appropriately. And I think we felt like by leaving that cash, any cash available in there, that that would long-term minimize the amount of money that we would have to, you know, keep putting into the fund. So it's the result of, you know, a couple of years ago, making the decision that it was well-funded, that we would pull money out to be able to be used, you know, for capital projects, refunding credits and things of that nature. And so that's done through FY 29, and then FY 2030 forward, we're not pulling any money out of the fund. And so that's why you see it labeled like that. The additional funding sources down there for the schools specifically, you can see, you can actually see the bond issuances, that very last line item.
Right.
And then you can actually see money that they'll be bringing in from their major capital reserves and some of the other funding sources. But specifically, that particular one was coming from the debt capital fund.
Okay. With that said, then, let's say FY 28, FY 2030, and so forth, the schools' years. If you get a bond that's 20 million, but you have some, if you purchase it at a lower price, then that, that extra money would then go back into this debt fund. Is that correct?
Yes.
So this is kind of a perpetual thing possibly, that what you see here is what we know today and not what we know tomorrow?
That's correct. It's what, it's the picture that we know today. And to your point, very much so, if when we sell those bonds, right now, we're assuming a 6% interest rate if it comes in less, and it takes less money for us to pay the debt service, and that would be cash that would, you know, accumulate and be in the fund.
Right. Well, let's pray the interest rates come down one day.
Yes.
Thank you for that explanation.
Any other questions?
Martha?
Yes, sir.
I got a question.
Mr. Radford.
Yeah. Steve?
Yes, sir.
I read every page in the Fee Compendium.
Yes, sir.
And I can tell you who's the lowest and who's the highest. The highest is the massage parlor at 5,000. But let me direct your attention toward the building and trade permit fees. When I read the second column, Effective Date, it says 2004, does that mean those fees have not been changed since 2004?
Yes, that's correct. On some of those, yeah, there's, some of those fees have not been changed since 2004. I believe we updated some of the, some fees last year, so, yeah, those fees have been the same since 2004.
Wow. Okay, because we change, the building code changes every two years, and they have a suggested fee cycle in each of those updates. So, you know, I don't know who's looking at that. I'm just making sure we're staying up with the suggested fees. I'm not trying to, I'm a builder, and I'm not trying to have to pay more for building permits, but I want to make sure our staff is getting.
Right. We do examine those fees annually for all departments and invite, you know, departments can make requests to change fees every year as part of our budget cycle.
Okay.
So those have, we also compare against surrounding jurisdictions and try to maintain those fees at similar levels.
Just 2004 is a while back.
It is.
Here it is, 2023. I know other localities I build in, they throw the current fee schedule from the IRC in my face, and it's, it's a lot higher. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other questions? So is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
Mr. North, so would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item E, Second Reading of Ordinances. One, ordinance to appropriate funds for a fiscal year 2023-2024 operations budget and approval of the classification and pay plan for fiscal year 2023-2024 for the County of Roanoke, Virginia. Ms. Lori Gerhart, Director of Finance and Management Services, welcome.
Madam Chair and members of the Board, this is to conduct the second reading of three ordinances to appropriate funds for the fiscal year 23-24 County of Roanoke operating and capital budgets, the Roanoke County Public Schools categories, and also approve the County of Roanoke classification and pay plan for fiscal year 23-24. We made minor reclassification changes to the school categories in relation to the school activity funds, as well as addressed constitutional officer salaries in the Roanoke operating budget ordinance since the first reading. Staff recommends approval of the three fiscal year 2023-2024 budget appropriation ordinances, and also recommends approval of the attached classification and pay plan for fiscal year 2023-2024.
Are there any questions for Ms. Gerhart? Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance ordinance?
Madam Chair, I move the motion of Item D, excuse me, E1A.
And is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item B, Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Capital Budget for the County of Roanoke, Virginia. And so are there any questions regarding that ordinance? Is there a motion?
Madam Chairman, I would move the approval of the ordinance appropriating funds for the fiscal year 2023-2024 capital budget for Roanoke County.
Is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. And then Item C, Fiscal Year 2023-2024 for Roanoke County Public Schools Categories. Are there any questions regarding that? Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item F, Public Hearing and Second Reading of Ordinances. One, public hearing for citizen comments and second reading of an ordinance amending Section 10-3 levying of license fees and taxes of the Roanoke County Code, raising the threshold of the annual gross receipts for those entities required to pay the county business license tax from 135,000 or more to 150,000 or more, and requiring entities that are below that threshold to pay only an annual $50 license fee. Mr. Steve Elliott.
Good afternoon again, Madam Chair and members of the Board. As you said, we are presenting the second reading of an ordinance amending Section 10-3 of the Roanoke County Code to raise the threshold for the gross receipts from 135,000 to 150,000 for B-Pole tax. Entities below that $150,000 gross receipt threshold would pay only an annual $50 license fee. There have been no changes since the first reading. Amending the county code to adjust the gross receipts threshold requires a public hearing and two readings of an ordinance. This public hearing was advertised in the Roanoke Times on May 9th and May 16th, as required by state code. Staff recommends holding the public hearing and approval of the second reading of this ordinance.
Are there any questions for Mr. Elliott? So at this time, we will open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, I don't believe I have any, anybody to speak at this time, so I will now close the public hearing. Are there any further questions from the Board? And if not, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair. We approve Item F1.
And a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. Item Two, the petition of Boeing U.S. Holdco Incorporated to obtain a special use permit to operate a car wash on approximately 1.97 acres of land, Zone C2 High Intensity Commercial District and CVOD Clearbrook Village Overlay District located at 3434 Buck Mountain Road and 5147 Franklin Road, Cave Spring Magisterial District. Mr. Philip Thompson, Director of Planning, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board. I'm going to pull this presentation up. All right, Debbie. All right.
Patience, fellow patience. Is it not working?
Yes, it is. I think it is. I got two slides that come up. I got this one, and I got this one.
When in doubt. Like me.
Perfect. First of two car washes. This application is located at, at the intersection of Bent Mountain Road and Franklin Road, so 220, and Buck Mountain Road. Across the street is the Clearbrook Walmart, adjacent to Clearbrook Elementary School, so the existing facility there. So the address is 3434 Buck Mountain Road, which is the primary building. It's the Willow Tree Retail Sales Building, and then there's another building with the address of 5147 Franklin Road. A little less than two acres, currently retail sales on the property. The applicant is proposing car wash for this property. A couple of photos, there's the picture of the Willow Tree that exists today, and the building that fronts Franklin Road. Again, this is adjacent to, you can see the two buildings, kind of sit on, somewhat of a pad, a little elevation to the southern part of the property line. This is looking across the street at the Clearbrook Walmart and the auto dealerships that sit there off of 220. And again, a couple of other pictures of the Willow Tree and behind Willow Tree as well. Does have an existing entrance off of Buck Mountain Road. I think part of the application would narrow it a little bit, given the current pavement. And this is looking back up 220. There is no entrance off 220, it's just off of Buck Mountain, using the existing entrance off 220, or Buck Mountain Road, excuse me. So we define a car wash as the washing and cleaning of vehicles. They're usually automatic conveyor machines. This also serves car washes. It does require special use permit in the C2 district. There is a use of design standard that requires them to be, recycle 85% of the water that's used in a car wash. It's also within the Clearbrook Village Overlay District. This was adopted back in 2000, after the guidelines were adopted as well. So it does limit building heights, as well as lock coverage. Landscaping provisions are assigned regulations and lighting regulations that are more stringent than what would be under a normal C2 property. There's also the guidelines, again, they were developed in the late 90s, were adopted in 2000, and most of the guidelines were incorporated into the overlay district. There are some architectural treatment issues as well that are part of the guidelines for Clearbrook. So in your packet, there's a concept plan. Obviously, there's automated car wash building, roughly 150 feet in length. I think the widest is about 37 feet wide. There are four parking spaces. They're just parking spaces, 23 vacuum bays, two pay stations. Again, access is off of Buck Mountain Road, which is the existing entrance. And they are proposing sidewalk along Franklin Road, or on their portion, just on their property above Franklin Road, that will tie into the improvements that are going to be made at the intersection there. The landscaping plan, they do show landscaping along the buildings, try to help break up that facade that would face 220. Architectural renderings, they are proposing a parapet wall to help design some of the things, and they've added some elements to try to break up the facade as well, which is part of the, part of the design guidelines for the Clearbrook Village Overlay District. And a 3D rendering of what it would look like necessarily at this location, but what the actual facility would look like. Zoning, it is zoned C2. You know, adjacent properties are zoned commercial as well, to the rear, it's zoned AR. It is in the core, future land use designation, that's where our higher intensity commercial uses are allowed, so this would be consistent with that proposed use. The planning commission held a public hearing earlier this month on May 2nd. There was one citizen who spoke during the public hearing. Her concerns included losing a retail store that houses many local vendors. The location of the car wash could be located in other parcels of the area, and the car wash would not be visually appealing at this location. The planning commission reviewed Vias' comments on the project, and they also discussed the proposed project, the surrounding zoning, the Clearbrook Village Overlay regulations, the future land use designation. They did recommend approval of the special use permit with two conditions, conformance with both the conceptual site plan and the landscaping plan, and then also substantial performance with the architectural renderings that were in the packet as well. With that, I'll take any questions you have.
Does the Board have any questions for Mr. Thompson? Mr. Mahoney?
Mr. Thompson, let's see.
Mr. Thompson, a significant amount of documents in our agenda materials references the proposed VDOT work next year in terms of that intersection. Do you see that VDOT work, if it comes about, having an adverse impact on access, ingress and egress to the car wash?
So it's going to be, so what it will do, from what I'm understanding of the drawings that I've seen, you know, right now, you have that, so the four intersections along 220, they're making plans for to limit the through movement on the side streets. So you do have a, currently, if you're on Buck Mountain coming onto 220, you have a left turn, a left through to Walmart, and then a right turn. I think with the improvement that's made, you kind of get rid of that middle lane, the left through. So potentially, if this was built today, could it, you could wait probably and get into those left turn lanes and make the left on. I think it's going to be more difficult once those improvements are made at that intersection. But you only have the one left turn lane.
And do you see with the 2024 plan that the concrete median that's there on Buck Mountain, would that remain, or would that be extended?
I don't believe it's extended. It will remain.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Mr. North?
Yeah. To Mr. Mahoney's point on transportation, I reached out to VDOT. I don't know if this was shared with the rest of the board or not, but
Yes.
certainly it was, okay. You know, I'll just say this, that the current facility there today, never mind the car wash, has to deal with a right turn out, a right turn in and a right turn out already.
Correct.
Which means that if I'm someone living along Buck Mountain and Brandon Wood or King Chase or up there off Starkey Road, and I want to take my car to get washed, I'm going to go on down Buck Mountain, I'm going to turn right in, I'm going to go in there, I'm going to get the car washed. Then when I leave, I'm not going to be able to turn left to go back up Buck Mountain. I'm going to have to take a little jaunt down 220. And I can't remember the median size there today. Hopefully, it's large enough to accommodate a few vehicles that are going to have to make a U-turn, come back up, catch a left turn stoplight, and go back home up Buck Mountain Road or wherever I live off Starkey or over the Cave Spring area. So that exists already today. It's just going to be something you have to contend with tomorrow. So the one question I have that I couldn't find an answer to in this enormous monstrosity of a package was how many cars are going to be stacked up before they start backing up on Buck Mountain Road? And the reason I ask that question is because, you know, 34 years ago, when I lived over here in this area of the county, we used to see cars backed up down there on 419 going into the Shell Station, because that was the only car wash around that I can recall. It's a mighty fine car wash, to say the least. So, and that didn't have a lot of space. So you take about 15, 10 to 15 cars, and you are backed up on the 419. So does anyone, as they asked the question, how many cars? I believe it's going to be quite a few, but does anyone know that answer?
Okay, so I'll go back to this drawing. It's the concept plan. What they show from the pay stations, you can see on the bottom where they're stacked up a little bit, there are 14 cars. There's two rows of seven that come back. They only come back a certain distance, not even to the end of the parking. So you probably have at least that going back to the entrance, I would imagine.
Right.
Not more. So you look and get 28 vehicles potentially. That was the worst case scenario. That's a lot of people coming at one time to get the car washed.
That might happen on a Saturday morning late or early Saturday afternoon, I imagine.
So it meets our requirements, because there's a requirement for how much stacking you have to have at a drive-through facility, which this will obviously be considered.
That answers my question. Seems to be quite a many number of vehicles. Second question, Madam Chair, is the sidewalk along Franklin Road, that was planned already, never mind this application, is that correct?
No.
No? Oh, this is part of the application?
Part of the application. So what they're proposing at both this intersection, Buck Mountain and 220 and Indian Grave, is that there will be crosswalks across 220.
Who's proposing that, the applicant?
VDOT.
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 So our transportation staff met with them and requested trying to have sidewalk
crossing over Buck Mountain or 220 at that intersection.
This can't be for real.
So they're trying to tie in
I think we found a place for a new fire station. We're going to need it.
So they're trying to tie into that, that crosswalk. So there would be some pedestrian access between those two points safely.
So VDOT, let me get this straight. VDOT hasn't approved, hasn't approved the transportation portion of this, but yet they've made this recommendation because of this application. Don't they usually approve ours?
No, no.
No?
The project on 220 has already been approved
Sure.
as part of that. This is a, this project ties into that intersection. So as part of this application, staff had requested that they provide sidewalk to tie into that, to eventually tie the crosswalk at Indian Grave and the crosswalk at Buck Mountain, so that people, if people are crossing the road, they could actually walk along the road safely.
Well, let me just tell you what. From my recollection, because I lived on Buck Mountain Road several years, 20 years ago in my life, earlier, younger life, that's busy, busy, busy little interchange there. And you get a great walk across there, and a car turns left off of 220 going back up Buck Mountain. I just hope that no one gets hurt in that crosswalk, is all I'm going to say.
Yeah, I imagine there will be pedestrian signals. And obviously, there will probably be a time where it's red on all directions.
I hope so. I do hope so. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Thompson? Okay, so we'll go on to the public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing. And just a reminder that all speakers will have three minutes. There's a lighting system where you have the green, yellow, and red. So once it turns yellow, you have approximately, I guess you've taken up one minute of your time. So by the red, you only have one minute remaining. And so the first speaker coming forward, if you'd come forward and state your name and address for the record, please, Ms. Judy Hawks.
Madam Chair, is the petitioner not allowed to talk?
Yes, the petitioner will put a hold, if you would, please. Petitioner, I'm so sorry. Please forgive me.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Andrew Barclay. I'm with the Driven Brands, the applicant for the Take 5 Car Wash proposed on Buck Mountain. I'm here to answer any questions y'all have about car wash operation in particular, but also kind of following up on a question about the stacking. You know, we do have adequate stacking. But at our car washes, we also have attendants who will be at the pay stations to assist the customers, to speed the cars through. And then one of the things that we also encourage is monthly memberships that even make it quicker to go through the pay stations. So the stacking is definitely an issue. You know, we don't want our sites backing up on the streets because people will pull up, see a bunch of cars, they'll say, oh, I'll come back later. We want them to come when they make that first trip. So that's something else that we do take into account very seriously. You know, we like to get people in and out as quick as possible. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them for you.
Any questions for the petitioner? Thank you, Mr. Radford.
I got one question. What's your price, what kind of a price point system do you have? And do you have any of these locations anyplace else?
We have over 400 locations in the U.S.
Forty?
400.
400.
We just opened a 400th one a couple of months ago in McKinney, Texas. I think our, we have different levels for memberships. And I think the lowest one's about $15 to $16, so I'm not quite sure. Unfortunately, I don't live near one, even though I work for the company. So I can't take advantage of them. I have to be a competitor at times, I hate to say it.
Well, I guess people, it's whatever the market will bear, as they say.
Mr. Mahoney?
This is a challenging intersection for your operation. Did you or your company ever have an opportunity to ever have any discussions with the credit union next door to you so that in effect you could maybe have like what I would call a frontage road? So your customers could go back that way, beyond the concrete barrier that VDOT has in Buck Mountain? So they go out that way and then be able to make a left?
I don't know if we've had any discussions about that. I mean, I haven't heard anything from our consultants on that.
Okay.
Because I think we initially were just trying to use the existing driveway so we didn't have to do any alterations to Buck Mountain and to stay off of 220.
No, I know they are very well. It's just, you know, I know on 460, we've talked about trying to encourage some frontage roads. And in this area particularly, as Mr. North has indicated, a lot of your traffic is going to be coming from the west, Penfore, Southwest County, Cave Spring. Instead of going back out onto Buck Mountain and 220 and then having to make a U-turn back around, if you could have like a frontage road connection with the credit union.
It's good point.
Now, they point out the problem with the credit union. It's a one-lane into their ATM, and so it really doesn't fit. I was just hoping that maybe you guys had some discussions with them to try to find an alternative for your customers.
Yeah, not that I'm aware of.
Make it work better. Thank you.
But that question, Madam Chair, does the credit union allow only a right-in, right-out?
Well, I see where the credit union is, you can come out and you don't have the concrete barrier there.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a little easier, and you're further away from the intersection with 220.
Right, right.
Interesting point. Any other questions, Mr. Peters? Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
I apologize for
Thank you. Oh, no problem at all, thank you.
So I have currently opened the public hearing. And the first one to speak now, Ms. Hawks. If you'd come forward, state your name and address for three minutes to speak.
Good afternoon. My name is Judy Hawks, and I live at 5314 Amanda Lane. I'm asking this board to deny the special use permit for a car wash in Clearbrook because it clearly violates the Clearbrook Village Overlay. And according to Dr. Google, there are already 41 car washes in Roanoke. We don't need number 42, and now I hear we may get 43. When I moved here 20 years ago, I knew the area was zoned commercial, but was so impressed that the residents of this community created a plan for smart economic growth that would embrace our culture and had the vision of a village-type development with nice shops, restaurants, and maybe a motel or two to welcome travelers from the Parkway and 220 into the valley. First, it was the Walmart, and now a car wash. Is this really the best we can do? Is the board ever going to honor the overlay and vision of growth that the residents who live here want? They dedicated their time and energy to create the CVOD. For what? It's just a waste of time if you keep ignoring the overlay and approving special use permits. We're not opposed to smart growth, and this isn't about Willow Tree. But it would be awesome to incorporate this shop in our village. The store amplifies the culture of Appalachia and the Blue Ridge. Their artifacts, primitive items, and antiques from the area, all sorts of crafts, pottery, jewelry, and woodworking, all made from local artisans. In fact, I have a picture of how one local artist visualized our village could work, look like. And we still have the opportunity to create something unique and different, to welcome travelers from the Parkway and 220 into the valley. Think of something like an upscale fancy gap, Metazodan, Explore Park, Tuggle Gap, and other things that dot the Blue Ridge. We can promote tourism, economic growth, and have the village that our community worked so hard to create. The other reason you should deny the permit is the traffic. It doesn't take a traffic study or engineer to realize the traffic is only going to get worse. You've already discussed the Buck Mountain issue. But at Tanglewood, you go from six lanes, six lanes to four lanes, and it's horrific. It backs up at Clearbrook, and that's only going to get worse. I remember a few years ago, there were plans for a second ingress/egress at Buck Mountain Road and 220, but it was going to be very expensive, and the developer didn't have to pay for this. And we're going to make the same mistake again? Or will the developer pay for the road improvements to accommodate the traffic? Or must we wait until VDOT has the time and money to fix the traffic problems? Thank you for your time. Please uphold the CVOD envision this community has for growth.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Hawks. Second speaker that I have signed up to speak is Shelby Campbell. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record. Hello, welcome.
Hi, my name is Shelby Campbell. I live at 5498 Indian Grave Road, one street over from Buck Mountain Road. I've been living there for the majority of my life. So I deal with the traffic, the wrecks, the jam up. Sometimes I barely make it to my stoplight to get home because of all the traffic. I'm also one of the vendors, 100-plus, give or take, at Willow Tree Antiques since 2018. And this place has really turned around, and I feel like we give, give so much back to the community and to Roanoke. And, I mean, you see on TV all the time, people say, support the small businesses. That's who we are. We are small businesses. And we have grown tremendously. We are looked after by our owner, Robin Barker. She's done a tremendous job with us. And I mean, I know, and even in the parking lot, like y'all mentioned, when we're down there and we're trying to leave, we have to sit there to either go, if we want to go to Walmart's or if we want to go and get on 220, or even if I want to go home, we sit in that parking lot waiting for someone to either let us out or for the light to change. But it's been a big deal there with the traffic, the way it is and everything. And, you know, you sit and think about the stuff that's there. We're just a small community. That's all we ever have been. We'll never be a big town, probably. And, you know, when you think about what's there, we have two stoplights, we have a dealership that changes in and out from one type of car to another. We have an empty motel, we have a graveyard behind. We have a Walmart, an elementary school, a park, fire station, rescue squad, 21 townhouses that's been pushed in behind the elementary school that we fought against, but that didn't have to change. Two doctors' offices, a rundown, excuse me, bug-infected motel down the road, one convenience store, one beauty shop, one tattoo shop, one piano shop, and another rundown restaurant's been sitting vacant for many, many years. So I just, I don't want to see this car wash be squeezed into this small community of family-owned people that know each other from generations back. And I just think if it doesn't work, it becomes an eyesore. Then you've labeled it as just a car wash. So the next person that wants it, are they going to have to be a car wash? Well, if it didn't do good the first time, it may not do good the second time. Is that like a building where you can go in and paint it, stain it, add bricks to it, whatever, and make it sellable again? But I just don't think it fits our community, and we're not busy there. And we all have wells. We can wash our own car and our own yard. But it's just, like I said, I'd hate to see this be taken away. We may not make the money that the car wash might make, I don't know. But I just think, you know, we work hard to give back to Roanoke Valley. And we are known by so many people, visitors, people going in our states, people coming in there. So I would appreciate it if y'all would stand for us and put this down that the car wash should not fit in our community that we all love and have been there for so many years to see.
Thank you. The next speaker is Marsha Underwood. Please come forward, state your name and address.
Good afternoon. My name is Marsha Underwood. I reside at 2909 Tamarack Trail, Roanoke, Virginia 24018. I have been a resident of Roanoke County for 53 years, a transplant from Indiana through GE, choosing to stay in Roanoke County after being annexed by the city and wanting our children to have the best education possible. I'm here, not as a big business owner, not as an attorney, but as a concerned resident of Roanoke County, speaking from the heart. Do visitors who have families in the area or people just traveling the 220 corridor to other destinations stop and say, oh, there's a car wash? Let's go check it out? No, I don't think so. But I know firsthand, and I have heard many times, we love stopping in at the Willow Tree when we visit. Or, I was driving by last weekend on my way to the beach and saw the Willow Tree yard sale. This lady just had to stop, shop, and then was on her way to North Carolina, taking her purchased treasures to share with her friends. This would not happen if a car wash was on that corner. I know the Clearbrook area is a close-knit community. Unfortunately, the owner of Willow Tree, a lifelong resident, was outbid by big business from out of state. Is this what we want from Roanoke County? To not support those whose dreams are to have a business and choose Roanoke County as their choice to have it? And not only is this one business owner's dream, but also the dreams of 75 vendors who have their little shops in Willow Tree, antiques and primitives. who have their little shops in Willow Tree, antiques and primitives. I am one of those vendors, and I've been one for eight years. We love our customers and are always so excited to hear how much they love browsing, shopping, and finding unique items, not just not found elsewhere, only at Willow Tree. Will they say the same about a car wash? I don't think so. Being frequently at Willow Tree, I also have observed firsthand the traffic and many accidents on the corner of Buck Mountain Road and 220. There is not an easy access into this property. Would a car wash make this a more difficult corner for traffic? Maybe so. In closing, I was at the planning commission's meeting, and I know now it is in your hands to make the final decision. Is big business best, or is it best to support your community? I think supporting your community is best. Thank you so much. Oh, and by the way, Willow Tree Antiques and Primitives was voted platinum in the Roanoke Magazine's Best of 2023. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So that was the last speaker I had scheduled to speak. Madam Clerk, did you get any others?
Yes, ma'am.
So I will now close the public hearing portion of the meeting, and I would like to have any discussion, any questions, before we move on to a motion. Any questions by the board? Mr. Radford?
Yeah, Mr. Thompson, one of the speakers talked about the Clearbrook overlay, that it didn't meet the requirements. Can you review that with me? Because I'm not seeing that in your background information.
All right. So the way, you know, it was before my time, but the way I understand that it happened is there was a citizens committee that was formed to develop the design guidelines piece. And so in your document, there's the design guidelines piece. And it talks about the placement of, you know, how the placement of buildings in the village concept and certain things like that, and about the architectural treatment and some of those things as well. And also talked about a lot of issues that were site development related. Okay? A lot of those requirements were incorporated into the overlay district ordinance. And so they're going to have to meet those one way or the other. But when you get to how it looks, right, the architectural treatment, that's going to be more in the design guidelines piece, and how it's laid out, and what they envisioned for that back in the late '90s, 2000s. So that's where it's probably inconsistent with that, some of the design guidelines and the design guideline document. So that's what I think the first speaker was referring to.
Okay. And a follow-up question. So we're here hearing this because of the special permit that's needed, special.
Right. So it has nothing to do with the CVOD. It has to do with the C2 district.
Right.
Okay. So the C2 district requires a special use permit for a car wash. Okay? We'll just, we'll hear that in the next application that we just talked about. So just like the one at Ruby Tuesdays that you all approved, it's just a special use permit in the C2 district for a car wash.
So, and the reason why we're looking at it is because it has movement, it has traffic. It involves vehicles moving in and out.
Correct.
And that's why we do it for fast food and anything that has traffic moving, drive-throughs or...
To some degree. We have changed our ordinance, say, for example, a fast food restaurant now is by right in C2. So we have made adjustments to that. It's just one of those uses, I think, that it was an auto, you know, generates auto trips, and therefore it's still in our ordinance requiring a special use permit.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Yes, Mr. Mahoney?
No questions so much as a comment. I'm not, as the board recalls, I'm not a fan of car washes. I think Cave Spring already, the Cave Spring District already has four, and this will make five, I think. So obviously, we will have the cleanest cars in Roanoke County, although I think Mr. North might be nipping at my heels very quickly. I agree with many of the comments that Ms. Hawks made. I've been around here too long, and I was part of the process when we were putting in the car dealerships and the Walmart. And the overlay district was part of that, and the design guidelines were part of that. And I hate to admit it, but I think in some respect, the county's attempt to accomplish, I think, what Ms. Hawks is talking about, has not come to fruition. We had hoped that the overlay district and the design guidelines would help jumpstart the development in that part of the Clearbrook community. And part of that initiative also included extending water and sewer lines along Buck Mountain underneath the Parkway. We had to get congressional approval for that, to extend water and sewer to that part of Clearbrook. And it just hasn't developed as we had hoped. With respect to this specific application, traffic is a problem. And for the life of me, I can't imagine how the applicant will be successful. I think it's going to be very challenging to get in and out. But at the same time, I don't know if it's government's role to save somebody from their own, from their own financial decisions. If you're successful, I hope you're successful. I fear that you will not be successful because it's so hard to get in and out. I think part of the headache for this site is VDOT. And I'm not blaming VDOT, please, don't misinterpret me, but VDOT has certain regulations with respect to road cuts that you can have on 220. And so this property has a substantial amount of frontage, but VDOT does not allow the company to have another road cut directly onto 220. And that has been true for, that's been true for Willow Tree. Before Willow Tree, it was a gun shop. I forget what it was before the gun shop. But that property has gone through several different owners. They've all had the same challenges with respect to road access. I think that's going to be a problem. And I'm afraid that when VDOT goes through with its 2024 plans, it will make that intersection even more challenging. But having said all that, I really don't see a basis to deny the application. Unless any other board member has a comment, I'll go forward and make a motion. Am I cutting you off, Mr. Peters?
No.
Okay. With that, Madam Chairman, I would move that we approve this application. It meets the requirements of 3019-1 of the Roanoke County Code. Special use, it conforms to the standards set out, the use and design guidelines of our ordinance. It is, it's in conformance with our comprehensive plan, and I think it will have a minimum adverse effect on surrounding neighborhood and community. So I move that we approve this petition to obtain a special use permit, subject to the two conditions. Number one, that the car wash will be developed in substantial conformance with the concept plan for Take Five Car Wash, prepared by Panone Associates, dated March 3, 2023. And number two, that the car wash shall be constructed in substantial conformance with the architectural renderings for Take Five Car Wash, prepared by Core Three Design LLC.
And is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Sorry. No.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
No. So we will move on. The petition passes. We'll move on to item three. The petition of Marty Murphy to obtain a special use permit to operate a car wash on approximately 5.995 acres of landzone C2 High Intensity Commercial District and C2C High Intensity Commercial District with conditions located at 3939 Valley Gateway Boulevard, Vinson Magisterial District. Mr. Philip Thompson, welcome back.
Second car wash. This one is off of 460 in the Bonsac area. So I think everyone might be familiar with the Lidl site at, off of 460 Challenger Avenue and Valley Gateway. Again, on the 460 corridor. I zoom in, it's 3939 Valley Gateway Boulevard, a little under six acres, apparently vacant. They are seeking a special use permit for a car wash. This is looking at the property to the right, it's Valley Gateway coming in. Another photo, looking back from the property out towards 460, and the light there at Valley Gateway. This is along 460. Again, most of it was graded with, when Lidl was trying to put their site there as well. And then kind of, and you can see the interior of the property as well. So part of this property is C2, part of it is C2C. The C2C has proffers that were part of a previous rezoning that dates back to 2006. That's when the con development was going in for a bigger retail project that involved a grocery store, a home improvement store, and I think the CVS at that time. So it was on the adjacent property through a resubdivision. There is a portion of this property that has those conditions on it. But the two conditions that are associated with the rezoning deal with the back end of that property, which is closer to integrity windows. So again, zoning ordinance defines it as the washing, cleaning of vehicles. Typically, uses include automatic evader machines and self-service car washes. It does require a special use permit. And again, there's the standard with the water recycling system for 85% of the water used in the car wash. Their site plan or concept plan shows automated car wash building with the pay stations. They do have covered, which is 20 spaces, and uncovered parking spaces with accessible vacuums. There are two ADA parking spaces as well. Access is right in, right out from Valley Gateway with a sidewalk. And they're also, their intent is, if this gets approved, they would subdivide the car wash into a 1.74 acre lot, and then the intent would be to sell the remaining property at some point in the future. Their landscaping plan, showing the landscaping along the property in their concept plan, the building renderings that they submitted with their applications. They also showed a variety of pictures that were the application of their car washes in other locations. Again, zoning is C2 and C2C. To the north is commercial, to the east is commercial and industrial, to the west is commercial, and across 460 is R1. And then to the south, again, commercial and industrial zoning there. Again, it is, part of it is, or most of it is core, and where the car wash would be is within the core designation. We see that purple line, that's what used to be the profit line between the two properties. And where that purple line is, is where that profit conditions apply. So it is consistent with the core future land use. It is not consistent, obviously, with the industrial. But as I mentioned, where they're putting the car wash is all in the core designation. Our 460 study, that was recently adopted as part of the comp plan, shows a parallel network to the south of 460. And if you look at their concept plan, they are building that road that could be extended along that road I. Again, we had it dashed because it would be dependent upon a development and how they would fit that in. But they're also putting a sidewalk along that as well. Public hearing again, early part of May. There were no citizens to speak. The planning commission summarized two emails, and I think you've received some additional emails. I was expressed opposition to the car wash and more, having to deal with a desire for more retail stores or restaurants in that location. Planning commission discussed the details of the project, future land use designations, the profit conditions from the 2006 rezoning. The planning commission did recommend approval of the car wash with two conditions. Again, conformance with the concept plan and landscaping plans for Title Wave Auto Spa, and then that the car will be constructed in conformance with architectural renderings in the package that you have. So with that, we have to take any questions you have.
Any questions for staff at this time? Mr. North?
This property was excavated by a prior owner, or the current owner, and they abandoned the property with their plans for what we believe was a grocery store.
A Lidl grocery store, yes.
Yes. And for whatever reasons, the economy, expansion, what have you. But there was a lot of granite rock issues there. You can see the rocks still piled up. So has there been any concern by the applicant involving the rock?
I haven't heard any. I think most of the site had been, I don't know how much more they would have to go down. To tell you the truth, I think building up what they're going to build probably be kind of at this current elevation. I don't know how much grading work would have to take place.
Yeah.
If the applicant's here, I'll let them talk during their time about that. But I'm sure we mentioned it during our meetings with them. Usually, we have a pre-application meeting. We discuss a lot of issues, and I'm sure that came up. So...
How about the other car wash that's just across the way, within the boundaries of the shopping center, if you will, that they have to get a special use permit to?
They did.
Okay. Was any market analysis done by the petitioner that was shared with you or discussed in the application process?
No. I mean, I think with all these, they think that, you know, there is a market for it, otherwise they wouldn't have come forward with it. They did not share that with us. So again, I think their car washes that they've had in other places have been pretty successful. And I think, obviously, you drive 460, there's a lot of cars on 460.
I wonder if there's been any other interested parties with respect to this property. I hadn't heard of any. I'm looking at my economic development director, our economic development director. She's smiling, saying, "I just got here six months ago." Probably the answer is, "I don't think so." So I'll answer that question for her. That's all I got, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Mr. Radford? Mr. Mahoney? Mr. Peters? Thank you. I'll ask the petitioner to come forward, if he's willing to come and make a presentation. Is the petitioner here, Ms.?
No.
Okay. We'll skip that, and we'll go straight to the public hearing. I do not have any citizens who have signed up to speak. Has there been any? Okay. So I'm opening the public hearing, and then I'm closing the public hearing. And if there are no further questions, I'm ready for a motion to adopt the ordinance.
So Madam Chair, I'd like to speak to this case for just a moment. I've heard from a lot of people in the Vinson District along that 460 corridor. I think Mr. North has too. We both go to the same church. It's, you know, my first, my first response is, you know, I wonder if this is the highest and best use for this property. And then I think on top of that, we see, because it's right on 460. I mean, it's, in my opinion, would be a prime piece of land for the retail shops or the restaurants that everybody in the Bonsac area is wanting more of those things. So that's why I struggled with the first one, because I knew where I stood with this one. Because like I said, I do not feel it's the highest and best use, given where it's at right there, where it is right there on that 460 corridor, and the development that we know is working its way down into Bonsac, and just the growth of the population down there, and what the potential is all through there. I just don't feel like it's the best use for the property. I would make a motion to that effect, but I can't get to the motions on our agenda.
You can come in right here.
Oh. And the attorney to the rescue. So I don't know if there's any other comments.
Any other comments?
Need another copy?
I got mine.
Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Radford?
Yeah, you know, I just want to speak to that a little bit and just give a counterpoint to what Mr. Peters is saying. You know, we've heard, and I appreciate, we got all the emails also from your residents. Didn't hear personal phone calls or anything like that, but definitely, you know, heard, heard what they said in their, in their conversation through email. And, you know, we operate in the free enterprise, and it's not up to us to say how many restaurants, car washes, hotels, motels, that we can build in there. And to me, it's a special use permit because we have movement. Whenever we have movement, that's when it trips out, that we got to take a closer look at it. And so, you know, the people might want to have all those restaurants. Where are they? Why aren't they there now? Why is it taking them so long? We tore down a Ruby... We tore down a Ruby Tuesdays in Cave Spring to put in a car wash. So there's a clear, good example, that that argument does not work. So, you know, I side on free enterprise, and like Mr. Mahoney said, if the applicant wants to take the risk, let them take the risk. And push that project, if they're successful, that's great. And so, you know, that's, you know, I hear highest and best use, but they check all the boxes to be able to, to be able to put a car wash there. So, you know, I just wanted to give you a counterpoint to here.
And I respect, I respect that. If I may, I would say this, as we've seen over the last few, just a few years. I mean, comparing 460 corridor to 419 is like comparing apples and oranges, because, I mean, Chick-fil-A just came in not that long ago. The Lewis Gill Center just came in. The Kroger complex itself is not really that old. And you look at, you've got Applebee's. I mean, that corridor has development purposes. We have, I mean, you know, potential is you've got the other homes that are right on 460, just past the Lewis Gill clinic that we put in. You know, it's a main thoroughfare through there that is one of our last corridors to develop, in my opinion. And I think that we need to be very strategic on what we put down there. You're right, they could put a car wash down there, but what if it's not? What if it's not successful? Then we have three car washes within a mile of each other. We have the Blue Hills, this one, and then the one that's already in the complex, literally right beside this one. So I guess that's my concern, is that, you know, I'm hearing from the citizens, and I'm hearing what they're saying, and that's the reason for my comment.
Yes, Mr. North?
Gentlemen, both y'all have some good points. And in the past several weeks, citizens couldn't be here today because they work for a living, which I really wasn't in favor of having this here at 3:00 anyway, but no one asked me my opinion, although I did express it to my good friend and our county administrator, Mr. Kaywood, on several occasions. And he knows my opinion on that, and I also expressed it to the gentleman from Vinson whose district this property resides in. No five districts in Roanoke County are the same. I don't live in the Windsor Hills District. I don't live in the Cave Spring District. I did it one time. And those are great districts, always have had more benefits in terms of commercial, retail, restaurants than we have on the 460 corridor, and I will even say in the Hollins District. And people in the Hollins District that, that's where by Hollins University, are always asking me, "When are we going to get a restaurant? Or when are we going to get this? Or when are we going to get that?" And folks on 460, the same thing. One restaurant just inside the city closed recently. Now, I'm not saying that that's what should go on this site, but I do have to agree because of the citizens' concerns that vote for me, and they also vote for Mr. Peters, and they, and I listen to them. And while this may not be the right use for it now, if we allow this to go through, their right use, higher use may not come along later. So I hear both of them. And I voted for the other car wash, because to me, they don't have that many car washes that close. Now, there may be more in this area, as Mr. Mahoney mentioned, compared to the one there on Buck Mountain Road. However, when you've got one in the city, at Sheetz, at King Street, you've got another one moving up 460, still just in the city, really almost on the county line, and then you've got one around the corner, just across the Roanoke-Bonitaht line, and then you've got one in the shopping center already, you've got four. Okay? Now, somebody is, in my opinion, the market's going to get saturated. That's what happens in a free economy. And while I would normally support this, the concern I have is for the citizens in this instance. And so for that reason, I cannot consciously support this site for that car wash. As a matter of fact, let me just tell you this. From what I could discern on the, on the package, this is going to be a higher-priced car wash than what the gentleman just mentioned to us over on the Buck Mountain area. Now, I go to the Zip Car Wash. I paid five bucks for years. They went up to 10, and I about had a cow, you know? And they don't want to take my cash no more, they just want to take a credit card. So, you know what I do now? I go a little longer. You know, I'm looking at technology one day that will invent a car that never needs washing, because then I won't have to pay $10, but.
We might have to increase your salary.
We might have to do that, I don't know, for my allowance. I'll have to talk to my wife about that. In any instance, I cannot support this petition. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Are there any other comments? So make a motion?
Okay. Madam Chair, I will make a motion to deny. I have found that the proposed special use permit is inconsistent with the purpose and intent that the county's adopted comprehensive plan or good zoning practice, and will result in substantial detriment to the community.
And is there a second?
Second.
And so would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
No.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
No.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. So moving on, item G, appointments. Is there any board member that has an appointment that has not been given to the clerk? There being none, we'll move on to H, the consent agenda. Is there any board member who wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Madam Clerk, I don't want to remove an item, but I'd like to point out some really good news. I mean, number one, I'd like to thank Cox Communications, item number nine on the consent agenda, for donating another recycling trailer.
That was good news.
And secondly, I'd like to, like to point out particularly to our newspaper gentlemen in the audience, item number 10, we're going to try to apply for a discretionary grant to install some electric vehicle charging infrastructure at Explore Park. I think that will really benefit the park if we're successful with that grant. I think that aids in the overall marketing of that facility, that wonderful facility. And I think it'll draw more, more citizens off the Blue Ridge Parkway. And so I don't want, I don't want a lot of people to lose sight of, there's a lot of good.
Information.
Good activities occurring in our consent agenda.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you.
Do you want to finish with a motion?
I would move the approval of the 13 items on our consent agenda.
And is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes. And the next item on the agenda are citizen comments and communications, and I do have several that have signed up to speak. And the first one is Mr. Saznov. Welcome. State your name and address for the record, please. Three minutes to speak. We're glad you're here.
My name is Greg Saznov, 806 Huffel Road, Pilot, Virginia, 24138. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, County Administration. My name is Greg Saznov. I'm proud to serve the citizens of Roanoke County as both a fire captain and the president of Local 3194, Roanoke County Professional Firefighters and Paramedics. On behalf of the professional firefighters that serve our citizens and travelers through Roanoke County, we thank you for the time you have spent over the years meeting with your constituents and our members about our shared concerns and helping us find solutions. In those years, we've developed good relationships, and these relationships didn't happen overnight. We had a lot to work through initially, but in the end, I believe it is evident that our union is dedicated to its members in making our county a better place for our citizens and the employees, as are the Board of Supervisors and our county administration. The step plan that you approved earlier shows how much Roanoke County values our public safety employees and ensures that Roanoke County will continue to deliver superior services to our citizens and remain the employer of choice for public safety professionals in our region. Thank you. Appreciate every one of you.
Thank you. And then the next speaker is Mr. Wardelick. If you'd please come forward, state your name and address. Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Charles Wardelick. I live at 2317 Bloomfield Avenue in the Summerfield subdivision. And I'm here because of GloFiber. I've become very, very sick of paying the high cost and putting up with the bad service of Cox Communications, but we were pretty much stuck with them, and I didn't feel like going to one of the satellite dish possibilities. So when GloFiber came in, and although they made a big mess of the subdivision, I'm glad that they did come in, because they have afforded a much more cost-effective and reasonably priced situation for internet and TV. And so here I am, being happy that this is happening. I have signed up with them, and I've got the internet part of it. So yesterday, a gentleman from GloFiber came to the house. He was soliciting business. He wasn't aware that I had the setup already. So I asked him about the TV part of it. I said, you know, "I'm hoping that this will be coming through soon. I understand that it's in, in process." And he said, "No, it's not going to happen. The Board of Supervisors has stonewalled it." So I'm here to ask you folks today, is this true? And if so, why?
Well, I appreciate your comments, Mr. Wardelick. And we, to my knowledge, have not stonewalled anything, that we have, we've embraced them, and competition is good in the internet world. I'm not sure what's going on there.
To answer the question, because I'm on the RV TV Committee for the county, we have to do the franchise agreement, and that agreement, I believe, is for 10 years. So we renewed that agreement, I want to say in 2019, so, or 17. Anyway, it'll run till the latter part of the 2020s, but it's, we have to have that agreement in order for Cox to provide the TV, they have to have that to provide the TV stations or whatever, but it's, we have to have it with each locality. Each locality in Virginia has to have that franchise agreement.
So they're not even able to have internet through them?
No, they can have the internet, because it's not governed, but the TV part is governed through the franchise agreement that each locality has to have with a internet provider or a TV provider.
Is that, that's an exclusive?
Yeah.
So if I can add a little bit to that, GloFiber is going to replace the, they're more competitive with the internet versus Cox. And so they'll give you the streaming. You can stream TV through GloFiber. And their rate is a lot lower than Cox in terms of the cable, the broadband, I mean. GloFiber is going to, is a competitor for broadband, not cable TV.
So we're stuck with Cox until 2029?
Cable TV, but not for the internet.
Oh, that stinks. That really does. That really does.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's my answer.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. So after citizen comments.
Madam Chair.
Yes, please.
I'd like to make one comment. I know we normally do our comments at the end, but I would like to comment, because I know the guys and ladies possibly in the room that, that are here with us now, I know we'll not be here at 7:00, but I do want to recognize our firing EMS.
Absolutely.
This is EMS week in the state of Virginia, where we recognize our EMS providers. And of course, last week, we recognized our law enforcement. I see Chief Police back there, but anyway, I just want to slip that in, because, you know, I truly doubt they're going to be motivated to be back there at 7:00 and go through this again. So, but anyway, we would like to know how much we appreciate you.
We do. We do sincerely appreciate all you do. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Peters. Item J, reports. Ask for a motion. Is there a motion to receive and file the following reports?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
And would the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes. Item K, we have a work session. Work session to discuss the employee engagement study results with Mr. Richard Kaywood County Administrator Judy England-Joseph, Consultant Institute for Public Sector Employee Engagement. We will now recess to the third floor for work session and return at 7:00 PM for the evening session.